Welcome, everybody. Welcome to our Selectmen meeting. It is a regular meeting discussing concerns with the assessor's office. And Yes, hold on.
It says six o'clock.
Yeah, well, that's the one. It says six o'clock.
There is an empty.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, that's what I was looking at.
Sorry.
So today is March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It is three oh five P M. It's an earlier meeting. Thank you for bearing with us on this. And can I please have everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under heaven, in this full liberty and essence for all.
Thank you, everybody. Where's Mr. and Mrs. Hardy?
Okay.
No, I think they chose not to attend.
So we were not going to mention the the name?
Yeah, so I think people here know who the complainant is. We're going to do our best not to mention the complainant by name.
I do have a statement that that has been asked to been read into the record from the complaintant.
So why ain't he here, though?
They don't have to be here.
Well, we need to hear from him.
Honestly, that's not fair, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we can't require.
In all honesty, we've asked for an open meeting to another executive meeting.
Well, it's not an executive meeting. It's an open. So where are we going with this now?
So I can read this into the record here to the Board of Selectmen. We'd like to thank you for initially calling the executive session. We applaud you for following Massachusetts law and obeying the statute, which allows Ms. O'Brien to request this meeting to be open. As proud Americans, we can celebrate that Ms. O'Brien's rights under the Fourteenth Amendment were protected by the Board and not violated by some pretext. We are proud of our town when laws are enacted as written and gives my husband relief that the freedoms he fought to preserve with great sacrifice for this country still stands. Nevertheless, we do not think it's ironic that this meeting would have been scheduled today if the assessors had mirrored the same priority in protecting my rights as the Board has done this very day for Ms. O'Brien. At the same time, we do not feel that an open meeting is our first choice to share a matter of such gravity, but we do agree that the public forum is needed to address this ongoing situation respectfully submitted by the complainant.
Okay, hold on one second. We're trying to figure out something. Sorry. So where do we go from here? Because they have a right to face their accusers.
Just a reminder for the record.
So this isn't, I mean, I think they don't necessarily have a right to face accusers. I think the goal of this meeting should be to hear from Ms. O'Brien and, you know, we know the general, we know the in general, what the complainant is alleging, and I think Ms. O'Brien does as well. And so we just need to hear from her and then decide what action to take in response to that.
Okay. Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Are you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we'll continue on. You know, you thought it was going to be more of a hearing type thing?
Yeah. Even if she was here, it wouldn't necessarily be a hearing. It's not a trial. It's not a, you know, Ms. O'Brien is an employee of the Board of Assessors and so and they've chosen not to do anything about this. So I think the goal here is to try to figure out what happened, if anything was handled inappropriately, and if it was, then direct the Board of Assessors to correct the issue.
Okay. All right. With that said, Mr. Farrar, can you provide a background of what happened and the steps that were made so we understand what's going on? Sure. So we'll move forward.
So on August twenty ninth, excuse me.
Hold on one second. Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Okay, okay.
We Well, we don't know what we are speaking to yet because we don't Well, we want, we want to have a background of what's going on and what was being accused, what the complaint was. And then once we have an idea of what the complaint is, then you can address, you know, what's going on with your part. But, you know, right now, we have somebody that, a resident, that filed a complaint, brought some concerns to us. And now we're just going to hear what the complaint is and what the concerns are, and then we'll follow up with you if you're good with that. Okay? Good. All right. Mr. Farrar, so what's?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On August twenty ninth, a resident went to drop off a a veteran's abatement exemption, twenty twenty-two E form, to the assessor's office. And upon her, upon the complaintant going to the assessor's office, she was not satisfied with her with her interaction that she had received at the assessor's office. And she was questioned, she felt unjustly, as to how she came about filling out her her application. And that she was told to put a specific name on the application, different than what she has done for the last five to six years. And she thought that was odd. And when that had transpired, she was really uncomfortable with the situation that had happened in the office, along with she felt that she was being talked down to by the representative of the office. And so she then subsequently contacted my office, contacted me to to see what was, you know, what could be done or how this could be looked into. I subsequently notified the Chair of the Board of Assessors, Mr. Martin, of the complaint. I also notified the Chair of the Board of Selectmen of the complaint. And we subsequently then met with the complaintant shortly thereafter in a meeting in my office to listen to both sides of what had transpired. And we said that we would look into this matter, which we did. And we felt at that particular time that the matter could have been handled a little bit more tactfully. And we had left it at that. Subsequently thereafter, the complaintant had then contacted us again in writing us another letter at the end of October, based upon a letter that she had received from the from the Board, from the Office, stating that her application needed to be corrected and that she needed to resubmit her application in a corrected way and that if she was to have any comments or questions about it, that she was to contact me. I thought that was kind of odd because I'm not an assessor. So this prolonged her poor experience that she experienced in the office and the frustration that she had within her, her her and her husband had to go through. And then subsequently thereafter, she requested a follow-up meeting with myself and the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, in which we, you know, obliged her and went through some additional documentation that she had provided from the Department of Local Services, stating that the spouse of a veteran under the twenty-two E exemption had clearly qualified to apply for the for the exemption and abatement. Subsequently, during that time period, she had submitted her application to, you know, to the Office. She was waiting to hear back from the application. She'd never heard back past the ninety-day window. She had made several public records requests in the interim during this time period in which those documents were provided. And her, 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 her core of her matter, the issue was that it was past the ninety days. And since it was past the ninety days under the statute, it's technically denied. And so therefore, she had then applied to the state tax appellate board so that she could have a hearing based because she, under her interpretation, she felt that her application was denied. She paid an application fee of, I believe, a hundred dollars. She had, she had requested the hearing. She got con, was made contact by the state and said that there was no hearing needed because your application was approved. And that was news to her because she hadn't heard anything, and she was told to resubmit her application because it was filled out incorrectly. And again, she's feeling that she's been marginalized and she feels as though that she is being treated unfairly and differently because she's never had to experience this the last five years of applying for the same abatement. So therefore, when she had been contacted by the state, she was surprised by that, and she said she clearly provided them evidence that it was past the window. And so that she was entitled to a a hearing, and the state said, well, that we do have proof here that you were granted it, and she was granted it subsequently thereafter. And she, she was given her hundred dollar feedback from the state. The hundred dollars was for the public hearing, or for the, for the hearing for the appellate tax board that was given back to her. And she was awarded her exemption and abatement shortly thereafter on December thirty-first. She had came to town offices shortly thereafter, in sometime in mid-January, to get a certificate. She had come down to the assessor's office to ask for her certificate because she, she was made aware she was awarded her abatement. They didn't have the certificate ready for her. And then I received either a call or somebody had come up to my office asking me to go down to the assessor's office because this person was in the building, which I did. I interacted with this person. It was brought to my attention that the person was yelling. I didn't hear yelling, but that was told to me that it was yelling. And that, you know, I will needed to come down to try to help out the situation, which I did. And this person then came up to my office. We had a discussion. I called down to the office, asked for the this person's certificate. The certificate was provided. It was brought up by the Chair of the Board of Assessors. It was handed over to this person. And during that period of time, you know, it was explained that we were going through a new system. There was a new computer software program and that it was tough to get these certificates out in a timely manner, in an organized manner. And we apologize for that. However, you know, there was a further discussion there about the application. And it was clearly stated by the Chair that the same process that was used this year is going to be used next year in terms of applying for your abatement exemption. And that gave pause to the complaintant because of the fact that she would have to go through this arbi, you know, this arbitratious procedure on just simply applying for an abatement that she has gotten for the last five years. And she feels as though that she's being treated differently than somebody else. And I think that's kind of where we are today.
Okay. So why does she feel she's being treated differently?
Well, she feels as though that she's being treated differently because of the fact that she's never had to go through this in the past. That she's, that she has to put her husband's name on the application when it clearly states under the D L S regulations that you can, that the spouse and the owner of the domicile can apply for the, the, the abatement exemption. We had also provided during that time period a, an opinion from Town Council stating that, you know, that it was done correctly. So and that the submission was submitted correctly. So, you know, I think that, that along with, you know, having to to deal with all of this back and forth and misinformation. There was also letters that were sent to Mrs. Hart, to, to the complaintant that were in the husband's name that should have been in the wife's name. And she feels as though that she's being marginalized and that she's not being treated fairly and equitably with her application.
Okay. Did you have anything? Yeah, no. Do you have anything else?
Just to clarify, when you asked Law Council, you're saying that she did the right thing or they did the right thing?
That that it was submitted correctly.
And it should have been approved?
Right.
Okay, all right. All right. Do you have anything else, sir? Good, okay. Do you want to speak now? Now, Betty Jo? Okay, I just say your name, who you are.
Betty Jo, right.
Okay, thank you. Nice having you, sir.
So I am, I've been in my position for one year. And when I got to my position, a lot of the paperwork in the office was not filled out correctly. There's been forms and things that weren't followed properly. So I have had to make sure that when paperwork comes into the office that it's corrected. So many applications have come into the office that are not corrected and have been, the applicants have been told to change this, do this, provide that, we need more documentation, whatever it is. This particular application is a veteran exemption application. And it is up to the Board of Assessors to decide, not me, the Board of Assessors, to decide what, how the application is, if it's approved or denied or whatever. And the Town Administrator, the Select Board doesn't have jurisdiction over that. If somebody feels that their application is not being processed properly, then they have steps that they can go through, which is the appellate tax board. So this person went and did that and didn't get any stuff. She didn't get anything because she got what she needed. Well, what she is entitled to, what the veteran is entitled to, I should say, the veteran is entitled to. And that happened. And so she withdrew her application. I treat everyone the same that comes into my office, no matter who they are. I have never treated her differently, but I can tell you that she's raised her boy. She's been disrespectful. She disrupted a board meeting. We've had to give Jim several times. More than once to come down to the office. She, we have a code of conduct in this building that she's repeatedly violated. The only thing that she hasn't done is swear, but she's repeatedly done that. There's people in this building that have been witness to this. And she constantly, I feel that she has been more disruptive to me than anything. I've always been cordial to her. I've never treated her any differently than anyone. When she comes into the office, I always greet her. I always say, what can I do to help you? And as soon as I start speaking, then there's a disruption. And I, I, I have said to Jim that many times that I cannot deal with this person in the office, that he has to be there, has to be a witness, because she can turn and say anything that she wants. So I need somebody in the office to be a witness to what's going on so that I don't get accused of doing something that I never did. But I'm also confused why we're even having this meeting because I met with you and I met with Jim in your office on October fifth with your daughter in the office. And I said to you, we went through this whole thing. You both agreed that I, that there was nothing. And you even said to me, you said, I know this is nothing, but I have to ask you, are you a racist? And I said, no, I'm not. And that was the end of it. Now, five months later, that was on October fifth. Now, five months later, we're here having this discussion. So I don't understand. It's, this person has been the person who's constantly records requests and doing this and doing that. And we try to explain, the office has been in a mess. We had a computer. We had a computer conversion. We had different things. So the paperwork didn't go out on time, but she requested it, and we figured out a way that we can get her the paperwork. We've been accommodating her in every way. We've met every records request. We've given her everything that she's requested in a timely manner and a nice manner, like we would do any other person that ever came into the town. We would treat them all the same way, fairly, equally. That's what our job is. That's what we do. That's what we do. And so that's all I can really say.
Okay. So the reason why the Board of Selectmen is looking into it, because the applicant, the spouse of the applicant, well, the applicant is a minority. She is black and felt that she was being marginalized because of that. That she was entitled to have something because she was married to a veteran. That veteran is also entitled to have that abatement. There was also concern that she is the sole property owner. And that she has been approved for this form for the past previous five years that she's applied for it and hasn't had any issues. And now, because and we all understand offices change over, different people change in offices. Things happen. But there was concern with why she was being detained. And, you know, I've discussed this with her in length. We've had meetings about it. We had legal opine on it to make sure that the form was being filled out correctly by the applicant. Legal told you, told the assessors that it was correct and it should be approved. The applicant provided documentation because she actually had to go to the state. And when the state, the state notified her that it was approved, not the assessor's office. And on the form that she showed us, it said internally denied on the form. Our understanding is that's not even a process within assessors. There's no such thing as internally denied. The form was filled out correctly. We had everybody opine on that. And we even reached out to the state for that, and the state did agree that it was filled out correctly and it should have been approved. The only people that are saying that it's not approved, and it even specifically says on the form that the spouse can apply for it. And the statute says, which is twenty-one E, says the spouse can apply for it. Now, she is the sole owner of the property. And meaning her name is the one that appears on the tax bill. Her name is the one that appears on the property, the mortgage. And she is married to a veteran. That marriage is legal. And it clearly states on the form that that person can apply for it. On the second page of the form, Veterans Abatement Application, it asks for the veteran's information. So we have everybody saying yes. The applicant is filled out correctly.
I don't know who everybody is, but the only person that matters
illegal.
Tax board. Once again, you guys just agree. You folks and Jim do not have any control over the Board of Assessors. And you just want us to make, you take your decision. In all due respect, your complaints should be here because this is here, what Jim's saying. Everything he's saying has not happened the way it's happened. This is, so they should be here. It's not fair to us.
So can you please identify who you are?
My name is Bruce Martin, and I'm a Chair member of the Board of Assessors.
Thank you, sir.
I'm also a taxpayer and a resident. This is not fair to us. It's not fair to anybody in the town. You don't understand. Jim had been in our office multiple times. He was in the office the day, weeks ago, when we had a board meeting. We asked him, please, because he told us that the claim was going to come in his office. They were, we asked him, please, come down later because it's going to be a problem that we noticed. He said, no problem. I'll take care of it. We're in a Zoom meeting. We explained to him the reason why, because we're in a Zoom meeting on there. We have no control what's going to happen, what's not going to happen. If they go wrong or questions come up or things of that nature, we asked Mr. Farrar, please don't let her come down by herself. Please come later because she's already upset. She's asking for things of that nature. She came up, not with Mr. Farrar, but by herself after she had already met with Mr. Farrar. Came down and there was a sign on the door saying, three o'clock, we'd be out. Unfortunately, we went over. We are very sorry. I went to her door, explained to her, we're still in a Zoom. We're very sorry. She demanded the call. I said, but we can't do that. Well, it's not for public. People.
It was not the application.
But I'm telling you, but this is what happened. The thing I realized, oh, this is, they should be here because things that Jim's saying is hearsay. They should be hearsaying. Not Jim. And he's not there yet. What about our back? He's, let me say, we asked him to come to our room. He has not. He was in that meeting, in our meeting, and over every piece of paper that your attorney sent to us, agreed that those were the things that we're supposed to be able to give to her, and he agreed with us as a board and as the Town Administrator. They all fit the needs that your attorney set, and he agreed. And that's why he was going to give to her at three o'clock in the afternoon. But then we asked, once again, please make sure you come down with her. He didn't. She came down as a ruling, screaming at everybody and everything else there. We had to shut her Zoom down. I asked SaaS to please leave the building because she's being very disruptive and she was screaming and yelling. So I went back in and had to shut the door and lock it. She was screaming and yelling. I even pointed at the sign that Mr. Farrar had put up, and she did everything but swear. I even pointed out, please, you're doing everything wrong here. I don't want to fight with you. I don't want to figure that. And the first thing I even said, we're very sorry. We don't want this to happen. But she's very combative every time.
And I have asked many times for the Town Administrator to intercede because this is a very highly charged situation, and I have yet to have him be there to support me as a town employee, which is very disheartening. He should be involved and he should be making sure that people are not coming into our office and yelling and screaming at us, no matter who they are. And I, I don't feel that I have the protection from this woman, from the town, that, and it's been just, it just keeps ramping up. It keeps ramping up and keeps ramping up.
And once again, Jim's been here two years. He understands what's going on. Betty Jo is the longest assessor we've had in the last four years, and she's been here living over a year. So that's been hard for Betty Jo. And in the time, she's gone to three computer systems to learn how to do that. Classic A P five in beta. All these things have to do with the abatement and everything in that nature too, with the certificates. So if they're not online, if we can't get through, everybody in the building's had problems with them. We've all had problems. There's going to be problems. We've told Jim, we've had problems. I can show tons of email for the last nine months. I T's had to go into the back of the building, the back of the computer, you know, to fix them and all that. But nobody wants to hear this stuff. And we, and Jim knows that they're probably bought certificates up to everything. And the A P B is the one that would have the final say. She withdrew her application. They didn't say it was okay. You're going to, she withdrew her application. We approved. We have a certificate that They didn't say it was okay, you're gonna, she withdrew her application. We approved, we have a certificate that she withdrew her application. Jim told us that she won the case and then she got her money back. She didn't win her case, she withdrew her application. None of that got mentioned here. Jim didn't mention that. She mentioned that she won, she got her thing, so there was no need. She withdrew her application because she got what she deserved. We don't want the veteran to get denied anything. We did not deny the veteran. There's a problem here. What I tried to explain to you, I tried to explain to Jim a million times, you guys don't understand. The house that you said is solely in her name. She is not the veteran. He is. He gets the veteran's benefit. But because she's married to him, she gets the benefit for the house. So therefore it has to go in his name and she gets the benefit of it. All we ask them to do is switch the names. That's it. That's it. We have other applications, same with the name switch. We've even showed, we tried to tell Joe.
We even have other applications in their same situation.
Same situation.
Where in the veteran's name. It's a veteran exemption in the veteran's name. And we have similar people that have this.
Not the first one. And once again, I have to say, this office has been a mess, so we've asked for help, we can only go so far. And, and when Betty Jo goes through class, she learns a new law, so she employs it and we try to have to do it. And we wanna be in state code and we wanna be in compliance with the state. So if there's a mistake that's been made the last four or five years and it's been going on and that's what's been going on, we corrected it. So moving forward, we have to correct it.
And we've explained it to every single person, we've explained it to every single person who's come in the office. We're very sorry. You know, things have been done a certain way, but even from one year to the next, the laws can change and we're expecting more. I was just out of class today, we're expecting more legislation with more changes. So even though it's been done this way a million times, I apologize, but now there's new laws, there's a new way, the, even the computer system in DLS is changing, there's new requirements, we have to do things a different way. I apologize and said, I'm sorry. Like I say to everybody, this is the way that we have to do it now.
Do you have anything else to add?
No, it's just like I said.
Hold on one second. Mr. Farrar, do you wanna respond back to what you said?
Well, I, 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 I will, uh, it, to some extent, um, and, and you know, look, I, I've calmed down, I think twice to the office to help assist, but, but with um the complaint. Um, but we have to understand my role here too. Um, and, and my role can't be to watch the door and to mitigate where people go in the building. This is a public building. So.
Excuse me? Can you not speak out of, can you not speak out of terms here, please? Uh, we'll give Mr. Farrar the opportunity to speak. I'll be with you in a minute.
Yes, sir.
Are, are you with the assessors or anybody?
No.
No.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, can you hold on?
Yeah, stay by.
Thank you.
And so, you know, when I'm notified, of course I go down. And of course, I, 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 I try to, you know, talk out of the situation and de-escalate the situation the best I can. But we also have to understand that is the town administrator called for every troubled complainedant that we have here? I've never gotten a call from the tax collector's office saying that I've got an irate customer. I've never gotten a call from the town clerk's office saying that I have an irate customer and that I have to handle it. If I did, I certainly would go down and try to de-escalate the situation. It just seems to me that for some reason, this person is being targeted.
Oh.
Again, everybody's gonna have their opportunity, okay? We respect each other. We're listening to what's being said. We're trying to get the full story.
I agree with you there.
Okay, so we're trying to, we did, we've done our due diligence, okay? I've done my research. We've reached out to legal. We've gotten their um, their take on it. They've, they've reviewed the laws um dealing with this and they put out their information, okay? Uh, we've, we've reached out to the state rep, state rep got with um DLS and um concurred with legal what they said, okay, um, on that. Um,
I'm sorry, I thought he said he wasn't able to reach DLS.
We have an email saying they're not answering back.
But they concurred, they concurred with what he's seen, that legal is.
We have an email saying we're not talking.
Okay, so I know DLS wouldn't talk with legal, right? So.
Everyone in the assessing community agrees with the assessor's office.
So we're gonna move forward now. Um, do you have any questions at this point?
But I would also like to say that if anybody is being targeted, it would be.
Ms. O'Brien, hold on for a second. Um, and again, we've done nothing but try to cooperate with everybody and work with everybody, okay? We have to take every complaint that comes into our office serious, especially, especially one when it comes to a veteran and that veteran happens to have a, a minority wife.
Well, I'm a veteran and I am a town resident and a taxpayer and so I.
And an employee.
And an employee of this town.
Yeah, and as a town employee, you gotta hold yourself to a higher standards, okay? And treat everybody with respect, which we've always done for you and everybody else. Even though I've been yelled at several times by certain people in the assessor's office. Because, and I don't yell back, I speak lower. I actually talk lower. And again, um, it's not an argument back and forth. It's to get down to what was, what is going on and try to resolve the issue. Because again, we don't want this to ever happen again.
No, we don't. And that's, and all the respect, we don't wanna, we don't wanna penalize anybody, the veteran especially himself. We don't wanna penalize anybody. And like we said, if we're doing something wrong, we'd like to know. But once again, Betty Jo has just came here a year. She's taken on from what was in the files and gone here and there and there. And fortunately, she's been going through the classes because we've been trying to brand it in many classes and found as you can, so she can learn the laws and she's signing down that have not been done. And not just for one year, two years, three years, for the last ten years. And everybody that's done it before, we have, because we don't get anybody in law honesty. So we just break from the bottom of the barrel, we try to get somebody, they take the paperwork, they look at it, they say, obviously this for, like Chaplain, for example. Same, it says same father, same next year and send it out. And that's what they do. But fortunately, if someone is reading the law, so she knows her job and she realized it's not being done correctly. We're trying to correct the process, not just with her, but with all kinds of people, with all kinds of different applications all across the board. It's not just one person. But unfortunately, this one person has been in the line like five months now. They brought you involved, David, they brought Jim multiple times involved. And you're like, you're saying you don't have a part of the assessors. She did what she was supposed to do, attacked the court and she got what she was required. And everything was taken care of. And all we're asking her to do is please fill it out correctly. We're not trying to deny her anything. As you stated, we did not deny her that by any means. We just wrote that, we could, and we even sent her back an application with, with a letter saying please fill it out correctly if we can have it done for our record. Because once again, if we are not filled out correctly and in state compliance, we get a portion of that money back. If we don't, if we come in and get audited and something's wrong, they can say, we don't wanna pay that complaint's money back. Hopefully we can just take that whole pile and throw it out. We don't want that to happen for the town. We're trying to do the best interest for the town too as well. You have to look at these things too. There's the validies, there's rules, there're regulations, there's laws. Well, things have to be filled out a certain way. What's gonna, if the day comes that they say, you know what, all these abatements are gonna get thrown out, you guys, we all lose the money. And that's gonna hurt each and every one of us taxpayers as well. And I'm a taxpayer too. Not only if I, if I afforded work and elected a person, I'm a taxpayer as well. I donate fifteen to twenty hours a week here and you know.
Okay, with that said, you said you didn't deny it. Who wrote on the form internally denied?
We wrote internally denied.
I did, I wrote it internally denied.
Denied. We wrote internally denied until we got more information because we weren't sure.
But that's not what it said. You wrote on the form internally denied.
Internally denied.
On the application.
It does say that.
It does say that.
Why, why would you write that on there if you didn't deny it?
Because we weren't sure what to do.
It's not a formal denial. If it was formal denial, she would have gotten something saying that her application was denied.
We're trying to figure things out. So we have an application.
So what we said was internally, internally, they couldn't make a decision on it. Maybe we used the wrong word. I'm new, I don't know. I, we should have said, oh, prefer the review or something along those lines. But we couldn't make, they couldn't make a decision on it because it wasn't filled out properly. So they said, please send her a letter stating to fill it out properly, which we did. So technically, we really didn't have an application from her because it wasn't filled out correctly. So there was no time limit technically because we had no proper application.
It wasn't filled out above and beyond and said, here's another application, please fill it out correctly. After we've all discussed this a million of the times, David, you know this.
So twenty one E, do you have that reference?
Twenty.
Twenty two.
Twenty two E, do you have it?
I, I can pull it up.
Do you have it?
I don't think it's something that we need to, this is, twenty two E is not going to make a determination right now without anything because it's not up to the select or legal to determine this. It's up to the appellate tax board to determine. The applicant has a.
So let me read twenty two E, which is the law.
Why is I heard kinda speaking?
So twenty two E says, one, veterans who have service-connected disability of one hundred percent. And two, spouses where veteran's spouse owns the domicile or surviving spouses of veterans entitled to exemption under twenty two E.
They're entitled to the exemption. They are not the applicant.
They, yes, they're entitled because you're married to a veteran.
Thank you.
If the house was in both their names, we would not be having this problem with this discussion.
Excuse me.
So, so that's, that's the problem, is it's in her name.
Oh, she is not qualified. She is not the veteran.
Right.
No, but she is married to the veteran.
Yes, but without him, he doesn't get it. So he is the applicant.
If he moved out today, she would lose, she would lose the A.
Yes.
Um, can you give us clarification on that?
Well, I don't think it's important that we litigate that particular issue. The issue.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, the issue is the communication between the parties. And I think if there was a misunderstanding by either party, and in this case, the Board of Assessors, they should have reached out to the applicant and said, we need this, we need that.
We did, we did.
We did.
We said this.
Right, and, but the ninety days goes by, it's marked internally denied. And then, you know, the applicant claims she doesn't know what, you know, what the status of the application was. She, she files with the ATB. And then that obviously causes additional things to happen.
Never once did she contact us to ask for where is, what is the status of my application.
Can you, if, we're, we're allowing each other to speak, so we're not gonna speak over each other, okay? Again, let's all respect each other. I always give you respect and I don't interrupt you or have anybody interrupt anybody else. So let's all give each other that respect and let each other present what they need to say, okay? You'll have your opportunity. Thank you.
Right, so the, the ninety days, I mean, at that point, whether or not this technically was an application because of who filed it, I, I think, you know, the board should have communicated at that time at the ninety day mark that, hey, we still need further information or, and/or we're having technical issues with our computers, we need additional time to resolve this. Please bear with us. We can meet with you if you have still, still any questions. That would have gone a long way. Um, especially when the applicant had been granted the exemption in five previous years. So I think she's thinking, what, what's going on? How, how come this has changed? Nothing has changed on my end. I live in the same place, married to the same person. I got the exemption last year. It, I, it, it shouldn't be that complicated. Um, but now there, you know, there, I, I think it'd be helpful, you know, we're here because the town and the Board of Selectment is the representative of the town has exposure here if, I mean, the applicant has already threatened litigation, so that's why we're here. They're not gonna sue the Board of Assessors. They're gonna sue the town of Warren and the Board of Selectment is, is going to be the one defending that lawsuit. So, you know, in that, uh, in that vein, I think it would be very helpful for the board to, to see other examples of where the Board of Assessors has asked for additional information or denied or delayed an application's processing because the, the wrong person was named on the application, uh, the, the veteran's exemption application. That would show that, you know, this hap, this has happened before to other people who are not, you know, a, a minority and um has nothing to do with their race. Because that's ultimately what we're trying to decide. There's not gonna be any definitive evidence that the Board of Assessors or um Ms. O'Brien is racist. Obviously, they didn't say that, they didn't act in any way that, that was racist. But if they treated this individual differently and she's the only one that happened to be a minority, you know, that's obviously problematic to the town. So that additional information, I think, would go a long way in showing that race had nothing to do with, with this determination.
Break up. Kinda speaking.
Oh, excuse me. Do you have anything?
Not right now.
No, you.
Not yet.
Okay. So, um, are you guys able to answer that on?
I can give, yeah.
What vet, if other veterans, okay, enter that same situation where the veteran is the sole owner, well, not this veteran, the spouse is the sole owner of the property and was denied?
Nope. Because everyone filled it out right.
They told it outright, I didn't miss one. Once again, you're not, you're missing the point. Betty Jo is brand new. She didn't come in assessing before, so she didn't know the rules and regulations. As she takes the classes and as she takes the courses, she's finding more rules and laws and regulations to lead her brought to our attention. So when it comes to that time, she sees it, oh my gosh, this is not filled out correctly. So she brought it to our attention, we look at it, we look at it, the LS, we look at everything. That's why we try to say that she's getting taken care of. That's why we thought by sending her a letter, once again, many folks have already talked to her, Jim had already talked to her, so this is way out of hand. This has been going on since September.
Okay, I'm just saying, so we did notify her before the ninety day mark because we did send her a letter stating that her application was not filled out correctly. So she was given notification of that. Also, we cannot give you proof because everyone that's come to the counter that's filled it out incorrectly has filled it out correctly or has known how to fill out the application and filled it out correctly. So we don't have that because the whole point of, you know, the board meets and we're not trying to waste their time. We're trying to get the applications corrected on the front so that by the time it gets there, we can get the applications and we can get, because we are under a time limit, we are under a time front, we have to get these things processed. So we try to get everything done ahead of time so that when it gets to the board, that they can make the decisions and the, things can go out. Now that the computer system's working properly, now we have been able to, in this past cycle, been able to um, get them and get the certificates out and everything's working properly. This was explained to her. This was explained to her about the process changing and then she said, you know, you should have a class on how to do this. DOR wants us to have training on this to tell the residents how it's supposed to be done. We plan on doing this. I told her that. We told, I, I, everything, you know, just like I do to every single person who comes into the office that has a problem with their application.
Okay, um, thank you for that. Um, so we're trying to understand because my interpretation of what's in the application and when we met the first time to try to resolve this issue, um, we didn't come to an understanding that there was a reason to deny the application because, like, give me my opportunity. So we didn't come to an agreement that it was, was filled out incorrectly, okay? Um, our understanding was, uh, the applicant filled out the form correctly. And reading, reading based on what the application says and what the law says that a spouse can apply is
They can fill out the application.
When they're, when they're married to a thing.
They can fill it out on the applicant.
Can you, can you?
Of things?
Can you, can you let me?
You mean?
Can you let me answer, please? So a veteran spouse can't apply for it. Um, and there was no, um, when we asked you, you both, um, me and Mr. Farrar, whether, where, where you're getting that from, you couldn't cite a law. And then you told.
We have, yes, we did.
And, and then you told us.
David, after you had no.
Hold on, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you an opportunity. I'm.
You look at, because this has to come up. You look at us, we were there, Jim was there, you were there. You took that application with a smile on your face. So are you gonna take this? That's exactly what you did.
After we had the DLS law, we had it there.
Yes, you did. So this is crazy. That's why these people should be here to speak for themselves, not Jim. This is hearsay. He's speaking whatever he wants to say for whatever he wants. They should be here, not you.
So again, it looks like you're getting a little outraged with this. Okay, no, nobody else is. Okay, no, nobody else is. I'm not lying, I'm telling you what I heard. Cause I sat there right across from you and talked to you and asked you these questions.
Right, but it's, again, it's not the selectmen's.
It's your own daughter.
The, the selectmen.
I'll just respect that.
And the selectmen don't decide. If the applicant has a issue with how their applicant is, application is being decided on, they can go to the appellate tax board and they will decide how the application gets accepted or not.
So again.
Not even us.
Again, the reason why we are involved with this is because there was an accusation that she was being marginalized and treated differently. Okay, again, we take all complaints seriously.
And we understand.
And that's, that's our job is we got to research it and review it, sir. Again, I'll get back to you.
But in all due respect, we, we've talked about this many times in your office, David, with Jim, with Jim's office, with you, we all talked about this multiple times. This is probably the seventh time, David, in all due respect.
And.
So you got to think, it's a waste of time, taxpayers' dollars, money and everything else.
So I don't take any complaints as a waste of time, okay? I can sit.
Complaint going seven times then.
So again, we're going to in, investigate it and look into it because that's the town's, um, responsibility. Okay, we have to do that. If, if you were on the other side and, and you were in the applicant's position saying the same thing, we would take it with the same seriousness. Okay, and, and, and that's.
Conversation, I, I did say to you, in all due respect with Jim there, Ben Joe was there too, I said, in all due respect, and this is hard. I was there too. I would say, in all due respect, I would say, I'd be livid myself, I'd be screaming crazier than I am right now. In all due respect, I'd be saying the same way, but unfortunately, we found out it was filled out incorrectly, so we need to correct it. This has been going on the last five months. Once again, we hashed it out, one, two, three, four, five, six times. Now, this is the seventh time, hold the same thing. And what, you know this.
So.
So I don't know why we're.
We, 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 we're going to, we're going to get to that. Okay, um. Just again, we all give each other respect. Okay, we don't need to be raising our voices, getting angry, because nobody else here is angry. And I understand you have passion.
I do.
Okay.
We feel we're singled out.
I'm, I'm okay. Well, the applicant felt like she was singled out.
And she's not here.
No.
He has a voice and she should be using it.
But.
We are here, we're being shut down every time.
No, I give you ample opportunity.
Every time we open our mouth, you say, no, you're being disrespectful, you're being disrespectful. There's nobody behind me, you shut him down three or four times. I mean, I'm sure other people would like to say things, and, and once again, they should be here.
Okay.
Jim, what Jim is saying, this is all hearsay, asking attorney, that hearsay.
So what the applicant said to us directly and what we spoke about in the meetings, I can attest to.
Yes.
Cause it's not third party information.
You were, you were.
It's direct knowledge. I was sitting there, I spoke with the applicant and I spoke with you guys.
Yes, but what Jim read, not, we're not opposed to that, no, we're not told about that, this is like the open meeting. The plaintiffs were told there was going to be an open meeting, but we were never told, we were asked for an open meeting two days ago. We haven't had a response. So that's kind of child play right there, blinds right old eyes.
What, what do you mean about?
We sent an email saying we'd like to have this an open meeting.
I sent, I.
Yes.
We never, we never got a response from anybody saying it's going to be an open.
You don't need a response.
It was an open meeting.
You called the plaintiff to let them know about it.
And then it was posted as an open meeting.
No, it wasn't.
What's that?
So.
It wasn't posted in forty eight hours as an open meeting.
So can you explain that, that? Um, sorry, hold on one second, just stop talking over me for a second, please, um. So is there a responsibility for the town to notify the requestor?
The, who, the, the complaint?
They, no, well, they, they requested that it be an open meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And that was approved.
There, well, there is no approval. If they can request to have the meeting held an open session at any time up to the, the start time of the meeting. They could have waited until a, a minute before you guys opened the meeting and that would have been fine. You don't have to provide notice that it's going to be an open session. Any meeting that's scheduled to be an executive session under purpose one, there's a possibility that it's going to be an open session and that possibility is open ended until the, the meeting starts.
Can I just say, as soon as you asked for it to be an open session, we have no choice.
It goes.
We should have been notified, the plaintiff's been notified, they're clearly not here. We walked into this, we're going to be, that's a good meeting.
Betty Joe's request. And so it's open session.
But we've never told that, yes, your request is going to be granted or anything, maybe you don't have.
It's granted as soon as she asked for it.
We didn't, we don't know, we don't have access to it.
Okay, every, everybody, calm down.
All due respect.
So I apologize. You weren't notified officially that it was open, it was implied because once the request, once, once you request that, it's, it's granted.
Yeah, so there's, there's no, there's no obligation to tell people that it's going to be an open session, period, whether it's.
But I have, I do have a question because I.
So again, you, you directed to.
I'm sorry, I'm notified by the select board of the meeting. So if it was going to be changed from executive to open, I think I should have been notified since you did notify me that it was executive session.
Right.
Just as the complaint was.
But you're the one that requested it to be open.
Yeah, but I, but you requested from, you sent a message, a letter to me stating that it was an executive session.
So I think we're going around the table, something that really doesn't matter because you requested it and it was granted. And, and we don't have a say, we can't say, no, we don't want you to be speaking out in the public. We, 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 we want to do it closed in exec, executive session anyways, we don't have that. Once, once you say, I want it to be open and open to the public, that's it. That's, that's your right, that's your entitlement to do that. So that's why we did it. So that's why it's open session right now. It's being recorded, it's being televised, um. That's why that's happening. If it was an executive session, the doors would be closed, only the pertinent people would be here and there would be no recordings of it. So, um, that's the purpose of it. Now, I know people want to speak, okay, but we're not to that point. If you're not one of the assessors or a party involved, we're not going to get into that in the bad, at this point, okay? Because this is not going to become a screaming match or people getting upset. We're trying to get to facts.
Unfortunately, people are upset, unfortunately, David, I don't.
It's two parties that are upset.
She comes in and she's not, and she's not here and she comes in and screams and yells at her, that's the root of the problem.
Sir.
She's not here to defend him.
Sir, I, I don't know if you hear for, for the first part of the meeting, but I express concerns about that. Okay, and according to legal, we can continue because we're addressing the concerns there. Um, she's already expressed her concerns. Okay, um. So now we're looking into it. That's, that's where we're at. Um, it's, it's not a hearing, it wasn't posted as a, a hearing where you would be able to cross examine and have your legal representation or, you know, it is, it's not in a, like a court proceeding type thing. We're having a meeting to address a concern that was brought to the board of selectmen. And it's, it's a concern that doesn't matter who it is, if anybody brought something to us, we would address it with the same um, type of, you know.
Diligence.
Diligence. Yes, sir, thank you. I had to, I had to restart the brain for something there, but yes, thank you. And please don't interject no more, okay? Um, but again, it doesn't matter who it is, we're always going to try to, to resolve the issue, okay? And if you were in the applicant's position, you'd want us to do the same thing. And, and, and address it as fully and possibly we can.
Once again, David.
Because we're here to, we're here to resolve the issues and prevent them from happening again in, you know.
And I understand what you're saying.
Again, we got a beautiful small town and we love everybody here, we want it to work.
And I agree, so why did we do this in the first place, I guess, David, and why did we have five, six, seven meetings before we get to this point? And now we're here, and now members are raised, passions are raised, everything's up and raised and all that. So now, unfortunately, you can't get emotional about this now because this has been going on for five or six months. You haven't been behind the scenes getting attacked every day. We have been, we've been in the office, we've seen this woman come in, scream and yell, what's going, I've asked her to leave. I've asked this so far many times to make sure he comes in the office with her. He chooses not to. He says he's the town administrator, he doesn't do his job. We've asked him, we had a board meeting, he was there, he had your attorney's letter, said, this is satisfactory to me because it's satisfactory to the attorney, A, B, C, D, all the things that she wanted.
So you.
We asked, no, please let me think. Look, I'll make you sad. He said that was perfectly fine. We asked, my board member are here, please don't let her come in by herself because she's going to scream and yell, we don't deserve it. Betty Joe doesn't deserve it, it's been going on for five, six months, David. Nope, I break down, banging on the door, and I can start screaming at her because it's after three o'clock. Once again, we have no control over classes, you've been in class, I'm sure Zoom goes over, or things happen, crap, things happen, we have no control of it. We tried explaining to her very nicely. Once again, we've explained this to, maybe Rich hasn't been there, Derek hasn't, but you've been there many times, David. Jim's been there many times and the complaint has been there many times too. But we shouldn't be here, it should have been done, or this should have been taken care of a long time ago. So now frustrations are up. And things are done, and we've called people, you've called people, so now it's like he said, she said, or whatever, you can pull your paperwork out, I can pull my paperwork out. In all honesty, all we have to do is switch names, it's done and told with, and the application's accepted. Other than that, the A T B is the one who makes the final decision, not even us. We're not the ones that say, yes, we know you have to approve it. But as far as we're thrown on, we can do anything wrong. But now unfortunately, the plaintiff feels like there's something going on, and she's going to feel that way. But we have feelings too. What about our feelings? We feel we're being attacked every single day. We don't feel we have the support of a town minister or the select board. They said she can walk in here any day, Fridays, every time, we've asked plenty of times. But we don't get anything, we don't get a hand, we don't get a handshake, we don't get nothing. We, all we get is trouble coming. And once again, Jim just said, he doesn't get complaints from the tax collector and, or treasurer, so only the assessors' office gets complaints, Jim? That's what you just.
So again, again, address.
Well.
Address me. Okay, don't be addressing Mr. Farrar, you can speak what you know of.
He did say that, he did, did, did say that, it's recorded, right back twenty minutes, he did say that. He only basically gets complaints about the assessors' office. So that's true, and I've asked him about this. I said, there are problems, let me know, Jim, that's no problems, but when we had an assessor walk out a few months, a year and a half ago, we had no problems when I was trying to do things and it's certainly a different story than it's different soon, we're all singing at this time. And we certainly wouldn't be having this argument now, I guarantee you.
So again, now it's my turn, all right? We treat every, everybody fairly and equally. We received a complaint. We're investigating that complaint. We s, received that the town, town could potentially be getting sued. Okay? We opined or got, um, consultation from legal who is going to be representing the town when they do get sued to defend that. Legal agreed with the applicant uh, for their research and what they've done, that the applicant, um, you know, everything was filled out correctly, according to everything they can research through the laws. So let me just finish, so okay, we do that because they're the, they're the law professors, okay, they're, they're the one, the professionals that, um, determine what's going on. Okay, so we rely on what they say because again, when it comes to a trial, because the town gets sued for something, they're the ones that are going to stand up there and defend us and say, hey, we did this research, we reviewed this and we side with the applicant. Well, we just lost the lawsuit. Because again, you know, according to everything that we've done, the applicant filled it out correctly. It.
In all due respect, you.
Okay, let, let me finish.
Okay.
Okay, let me finish.
No, no, people, I can stay on the same subject though.
So the applicant filled it out correctly according to them, all right? You're telling us that the applicant didn't fill it out correctly. So with our meeting, we had one meeting.
Okay, one question, one question.
Between you, I, Mr. Farrar and the, um, applicant.
Yep.
How many meetings did we have together?
That was one with them, then you and I.
We had one.
Then Joe together, then you and I, and they, they had one, that's three.
So that's three, you said seven, we're, we're the other four.
One on seven times, seven complaints about this.
Okay, so there, there were only three meetings and one with the actual applicant and the town administrator. So we had one applicant, we thought this was resolved. The applicant came back and followed up with the complaint and said, it, this is continuing on and the behavior has not changed and I'm still feel like I'm being marginalized. So that's, that, at that point, we, um, we have to reopen it and look at it now. Um, it was important to have the full board involved so everybody can listen. We asked for an executive session to protect people's privacy and to, um, protect the assessors' integrity, basically, um, but you requested it to be open, so therefore it goes open, okay? Um, so that's where we are right now. At this point, when we look at the application, okay, I still haven't seen anything that convinces me that she wasn't treated differently. Okay, um, I want you to show me where she, she wasn't treated differently. We asked you if you've done any, i- if you've done any other, hold on, if you've done, anybody else has been denied in a similar situation. You answered no. So she'd be the only one.
So she's the only one that.
One second. I'm going to give you a minute. I, I'm just trying to lay it out. So she was the only one that was denied.
Particular application, other applications, other abatement, other exemption that we've denied and had your people come in and fill out. Once again, you're not listening, you're not understanding.
Well, you said one when we asked you, wha, what are the other ones that?
We have, we have another person that came in in the same situation, they filled it out properly is what we said.
They corrected it, they made corrections. She's the only one that would not do it.
We don't have a lot of houses like.
I'm sorry, you just, because you haven't spoken yet, can you? Thank you.
We don't want the veterans to suffer at all, therefore to make sure the veteran got their, their abatement.
Okay, and, and, and to be fair, who, who are the assessors here? Okay, anybody that's an assessor, raise your hand. Okay, an assistant assessor, so you're all employees, okay?
Can I just say, one, we're both veterans, I'm the veteran service officer in another town, we had a similar situation, I'm not, I'm not on our mortgage and he, he has to, um, he has to, even though I'm a veteran also, he's the only one on our mortgage, so he has to have it, even though I work in the town hall, I can't fill it out, I can fill it out, but everything has to be in his name. That is, he's the veteran that is, um, with the mortgage. So.
Okay.
So that, that's all, and I know that Betty Joe, being a veteran herself and, um, family members, all she does is fight for veterans, so she would never ever deny anybody, even if they were associated. That's all he wanted to say because we're in that situation.
Is, is he a veteran also?
Yes, we, yeah, my whole family, my daughter, everybody, so.
Well, thank you for your service. We appreciate that, but again, I'm, we're, we're just trying to keep it with what's going on.
Thank you for letting me speak, Sarah.
Okay, thank you, um. Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Harden did not complete the application completely correctly. She completed some questions as if she were the veteran. That's all we asked her to fix. If you look at the application, the questions were, you can, who named, whatever name is on it, it has to be completed as the veteran. She answered the questions as if she were the veteran, the homeowner is the veteran, but it wasn't completed correctly. And the reason we can't show you proof is because every single other person, and she had dozens and dozens of abatement applications that were incorrect. Every single person corrected the applications except for her.
So what, what's the law that says it has to be the veteran applying in the application? So that, that's where we want to go to, what, whi, whis, can you identify the law?
Veteran, I don't have the, the Mass State General Law, but the veteran is the one who qualifies for their abatement or their benefit. Not the spouse, the spouse, the, the benefit of it because they're married to you. But the veteran is the one who qualifies for it because we're married, you get the benefit of that. If I walk out and we get a divorce, you know all of it, my abatement or my exemption because we're, I no longer live in that house. And once again, we could bring all kinds of things up that we did not do. And all we wanted to do is collect the application. Once again, he gets the benefit. He gets the advantage. She, because she's married, gets the benefit of the benefit by being the household. But he still has to fill out the application.
So what if, what if he died?
She would have to buy a different application.
Exactly.
There's a different application because on there it says spouse of.
It's the same application, she just, she just.
Surviving.
She would be a surviving spouse, that's what would happen. Yep.
So, in, you can't identify what the law is that says that she can't fill it out?
We're not saying she can't fill it out.
She can fill it out.
You can fill it out for her.
Anybody can fill it out for her.
Names are wrong.
She just has.
My name should be, her name is, and vice versa, that's all.
Answer the questions as if the veteran answered them, right.
Because, David, if you couldn't write, you can have anybody fill it out all you want and everything else, and everything, just the name is all. That's all, and we just want to be.
Can we all just kind of calm down, and I understand we're all passionate about this, but we're just trying to get the facts.
I know, but we.
And we're trying to learn here, because I'm not the expert on this, alright? We referred to our experts, and we got their opinion, which is in confliction with your opinion.
We should have advice, what should legal advise?
So.
My legal, what, now, I mean, now it's, it's done with, we're trying to pick up the pieces.
So, Kate, Kate, again, can you all, hold on?
But you say, hold on, but you guys are over there laughing, we've asked Jim for months to contact legal, it took over three and a half weeks, he believes I didn't answer that about one thing. And that was when Mrs. was in the office, and I asked Jim to call, he called it in, the attorney got back to Jim an hour or so later. It's been going on for quite some time, it's not just when you guys sit there and laugh, yes, it's very sad, it's very disconcerting.
Well, no, nobody's laughing, I think people like, i- i- it's like.
Maybe tell us to calm down, I mean, guys, I mean, we have the letters too, and once again, once again, your opinion is your opinion, his opinion is, but he also had a legal advice.
So. When you keep on bursting out like that, it's anti-productive to this. We're all trying to talk, I understand, and believe me, I understand your passion, and I respect the passion, okay? I, I, it clearly shows you care. But it's not productive in a meeting to keep on doing that.
Well, we're rehearsing the same thing over and over.
We're trying to talk, because you're making allegations and accusations, and, and we're trying to give.
No, you guys are saying this, look, you guys, you can't get this.
Because you are doing it, can, can you?
You have your plea, I have my plea.
Can you hold on, please? Okay, you asked a question about legal, okay, so I'm going to ask legal if they can answer that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What, what's the question?
About, well, now we get so mixed up and everything, what was your question, please?
We keep getting told, my opinion is this, what is legal advice?
Well, they, they gave the legal advice.
I support it, you told me, because if we do what we're supposed to do, we, if we deny the application, if we deny it. She would have the choice to either accept it or send it to the ATB. They would be the ones to say, either way, take it back or not. Nobody in this room, or even us, they would be the ones, they would say, no, we did wrong, or you did correctly.
So.
She withdrew her application because she did get her abatement, because we did not want to hurt the veteran at all, but I mean. All we want to do is correct the applications, going forward, and because we wanted the application corrected for five, six months now. We've been getting dragged out, being called, being disrespectful, or not polite, because the citizens, all this, now, this, that, and we go on and on and on. We have lots of people that we spend hours in there helping people out, doing things like that, I mean, it's unbelievable we have to do that building, that office. Because everybody thinks we make up a tax summary or something like that, we don't, we get abuse from everybody. And all we do is try to make things right, and they're taken care of. Once again, before, everybody just took the record, and if it said David DeFresny, and it said the property, it said same, the person would just take it, say same. Or say Betty Jo has gone to school and learned it, that has not been right, the practice in the past has not been right, so we're correcting them.
And putting it down as, as though losing the money or exemption, they can take it back. Up to three years now, they can take back.
So if they decide that this lady filled out the, if they decide, the state, not us, not you guys, the state decide, she filled it out, they're wrong, they have a choice, they can say, we're not paying you bad exemption, we're not paying you for any of them.
So my.
We're trying to make sure that we're correct.
So my question.
Our state, wait a minute, our town isn't state compliant that we're supposed to be at, and I think you would want that. You guys talk about legal, you don't want it to be sued, well, I certainly don't want to have anything happen, but a state coming out third of all, and then saying, my gosh, you gave fifty thousand dollars worth of abatement, we're going to reach in and take those back out. And we just got twenty-two million dollars worth of new growth, I mean, I think for a new assessor, a brand new board, we speak volumes by changing the applications, getting them done, policies, procedures. No, we're not going to make everybody happy a hundred percent of the time, but we've tried, and we've tried, and we've tried, we reached out many, many times to make this project happen. It's not going to happen, apparently, we don't know what else to do, we've asked Jim many times to help us, his hands are tied all the time, I, I, I don't know what to say. I, I, I don't know, so we're here, and we are frustrated, and you're right, Dave, we are, but where do we go from here? We keep asking, oh, it started with the application, if we want to put that on the side, let's put it on the side, because we're here about Betty Jo, apparently. Like the way she was treating this person, she didn't, you guys even said she didn't treat her bad, you didn't find any malice, you didn't find any race, you didn't find anything wrong with it before. So once again, even you know, Dave, we've been going on and on about this. The death of the way, I understand, like I said to you at the very beginning, if I was this person, I'd be complaining the same way too. But at the same time, I think I would respect when they showed me, all I had to do was switch names around, I'd still get my abatement, there was nothing wrong, I didn't do anything, I, I started without trying to do anything maliciously. Neither the she, she showed me the correct rate, I would try and do it, be simple as that, but no, now we're here, five, six months later, being accused of this, that, and everything else. Over the application, one application that was not denied. So it's, yes, it's foolish to me, is, is, is it foolish to me, am I passionate, absolutely, I have other things to do in that office, we've been behind for six years, like I said. We had, every year we go through an assessor, every year. We finally got one, we finally got one that has a brain. That looks at the laws and does the right thing, we should be happy, we should be pleased, praising her, that we're not in more trouble than we are. In all honesty, and I'm, I'm just being honest with you.
Okay.
We don't, instead, we're sitting here criticizing her, we, we've got her on a firing squad. But this, very good, this has been taken care of, you know, since September. Right back by the paperwork.
I told them that.
October, yeah. So I mean, this has been going on for quite some time.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that. Again, you posed a question to legal, and now it's, let's go back on that topic, topic again, what was your question to legal again?
Once again, we, we're going back and forth about all the applications, because that's where it came, you're saying, Jim said, his opinion is this, well, if that's his opinion, we all have your opinion, but what's your legal advice? Because, once again, wait a minute.
Again, you gotta, you gotta direct it towards.
Well, what's the attorney's legal advice, because when we talk to the ATB, they tell us, you guys, even the attorney, no way, not even us. They have the last right to reserve what they're going to do or not do, so if we did have to, she had the right to send it to him, which she did, which she withdrew the application because she was wrong. And she did get what she was supposed to do, so therefore she was wrong. So, once again, what's the legal advice the council will say?
We went, we went over why the board of selection involved this in this, because there was a complaint that the applicant was being marginalized and treated differently, because she is a minority. Okay? Again, any complaint of that, we're going to take very serious, and we're going to investigate. If. If Ms. O'Brien was in a similar situation, and she said, well, I'm being marginalized because I'm a, I'm a, a, one of the protected class, being a female, okay? Then we'd take her seriously too, because I'm not in her shoes, and I'm not in the applicant's shoes on how they feel. Okay, it's, it's how they feel, it's not what you intended, okay, and we, we talked about this before. It's not what we intended, because sometimes we don't know, it's how the person feels.
And I agree with you.
And that person feels she was marginalized because, again, she's a minority, and she hasn't, she hasn't done anything wrong.
No, we're not saying she.
And, and again, let me finish, okay, so that's why we're looking into it, okay? Again, we asked legal, and we'll get back onto that. So, legal's opinion on that part, what, what was that stance on that? The, the email, that they're opined, what they opined on?
Well, we did send her an email saying that the application would never be renewed, so therefore she.
We sent her a letter.
We sent her a letter, so therefore, technically, ninety days, it was wiped out, it was gone. So therefore that's done over, so that's what we're looking at too. But my point is, he keeps saying, my opinion is this, when we call the OS or DOR or the ATB, they tell us, go by the state statute, which we all have. We all have a copy of it, sure.
Twenty-two E.
Not, that's the exception, not the law.
Okay.
But it says, we have, they have to fill out a certain way, once again, the veteran gets the abatement, she gets the, the benefit of it because she's married to him. Because if the house is only in her name, if the house was in both their name, we wouldn't be sitting here having this conversation.
But that's.
Never came in.
That's where she's concerned.
That's what I'm saying.
Can, can, can I just, you, you said that, because that's a key part of it.
Because she, but she would have never came in and had a problem if the house was in the same name.
But it, it's not, it's, it's not in both their names, it's only in her name.
That's where we.
And that's where she feels like if she did it your way, she would actually be committing fraud.
No.
To do that, so, because his name's not on the, his, his, his name is not on the taxes, she pays the taxes. Her name's not, his name's not on the house.
But once again.
Okay?
She gets the benefit of his.
Right.
Right. On the application that.
He gets, if he walked out today. Anybody can fill it out, but six-year-olds can fill it out.
She was a veteran.
Which question? Which question?
Just write the names.
But which, which question did she not fill out correctly?
The whole application, because she filled it out as if she was the veteran.
But you said she can fill it out.
Yeah.
No.
You literally just said she could fill out the application.
Or him, not ask him.
You're a veteran yourself, Dave, correct?
Yeah.
You can have someone fill out the application for you, but if something, they can fill it out for you, but not as you, as Betty Jo.
Right.
Because you can't use your hand to write, someone can fill that out for you.
But not as.
But not as, David.
Okay.
So these little words.
So, so where, where does it say that?
Okay. So.
That the applicant has to be on, on, on the front of that form?
So.
Because it's a veteran.
It's a veteran.
It's a veteran exemption, it says it all over, and it says the eligibility, it doesn't say the applicant. But David, the, the thing is, is that when these types of situations happen, when the select board, or the applicant, or legal. You know, we have to take advice from everyone, and when, when they ultimately deny it based on whatever information they have, then, then it has to go to the appellate tax board, and they decide. Whether it's right or wrong, and then the assessors are obligated under the law to change it if it needs to be changed, or not, and will. So when these kind of situations, that's what they're there for, it's not for the town to decide, it's not for laws to decide, it's for the assessors to make a determination. If the applicant doesn't feel that it's correct, they go through the proper steps, they decide, and then whatever they decide happens. So there's that way, it erases everything that we're talking about here.
And that, that's a root of why we're here, once again, and we've discussed this a million times.
So. Sorry, because she keeps on raising her, okay? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, we're here, not because of all of that stuff, we're here to see whether Betty Jo should be disciplined or not. Clearly, she's acting on behalf of her board, so if she's doing what her board is telling her to do, then she shouldn't be disciplined. It's a whole different thing if the board is, is coming up for discipline or for whatever, but if Betty Jo is carrying out. As she's supposed to be doing it under her supervisors, then she shouldn't be, if she's doing what she's told, then she should not be disciplined.
Right, and that's where we're getting with this, okay? Again.
Talk about all this other stuff.
With absolutely all of everything, and that's where it came.
So, can, can we all hold on one second, please? Did you have?
Look, I, my, my, my opinion is that whether or not Ms. O'Brien. Or the Board of Assessors was correct in their interpretation, isn't the issue. The issue is, did they, w- w- was their interaction with the complainant based on the, the complainant's race? And that's really the issue, because plenty of mistakes are made in, in these sorts of applications, the, the law is terribly complicated, if you look at it, it's like. Hundreds of pages long, and you read it, and you can't make heads or tails of anything, even if you're a lawyer, it's, it's confusing. So that's not the issue, like if they made a good faith mistake because they read it incorrectly, or they got bad advice, fine, it happens all the time. The issue is, were they singling her out, were they being more, were they looking at it more closely because of the applicant's race? That's really the question, and frankly, I don't, I don't see that here. I, I think, you know, it probably could have been handled differently and, and better, with better communication with the applicant, I know there's a dispute about that. I think we can just agree to disagree, but, you know, the key here is, is communication, I think there was problems. Because of the, the applicant's stance and aggressiveness from the get-go, that they were sort of walking on eggshells with her the entire time, but it wasn't because of her race. It was, it was because she was very aggressive towards them, and I think that caused. But, but, no, I, look, I, I've heard, I'm not, I'm not the arbiter here, you know, I'm, I'm giving my opinion, but. Look, I, this was an unfortunate situation, and there has to be a way to address these issues, so it doesn't happen again, I think that's really. We're not going to fix what happened a year ago, or six months ago, but we, she's going to apply next year, right? And we got to make sure the directions are clear, maybe have another meeting with her, maybe have, you know, send her a letter, do something proactively that's going to avoid this situation, because. She clearly feels like she's in the right, filling it out this way with her as the applicant. The Board of Assessors feels differently, DLS has a different opinion. I, I just think we need to find a way to address it proactively, because that shows that the town is taking it seriously. And that it has nothing to do with the race, she's going to continue to get the abatement because of her husband's veteran status. And, you know, it, it, frankly, it shouldn't be that hard, look, she, nothing has changed in the last eight years, right? And I think that's her frustration, and she, she's kind of throwing her hands up in the air and saying. What the heck, like, I, I got this before, maybe I have a new computer or a new person in there, but that doesn't change who I am, and who I'm married to, and where I live. That, that should be automatic, and she's not wrong.
Right.
And we agree.
Hold on, hold on.
I know, I'm just saying, we did agree with her.
Again, hold on, hold on, you have your chance, thank you, sir. Do you have any questions at this point?
No.
Do you have any questions, sir?
Well, I was trying to, to map, and unfortunately, we end up with a situation. To whenever, you know, it's like, I see a six, and you see her there at nine, and, you know, unfortunately, somebody felt really bad at the end. I'm more concerned that, you know, the applicant keeps forward and sues the town, you know, what are the next steps that we're going to do? So that doesn't happen, you know, like, can, can we make a clear form, can we do an online form, can, you know, trying to do. Being pro, being proactive, you know, in terms of customer service, so this doesn't happen, and, I mean, nobody is, has, is, is guilty. You've done your job, she's done her job, and it's just like from here, it looks like, like a six, and from there, it looks like a nine. And I just think we, as a town, we have to provide a better service and be conscious of how we do it. So, with a single, like you said, switch the names, but we, somehow we have to be, you know. Nice about it, and how, how to handle it, and not make anybody feel bad.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yes.
Um, moving forward, with every abatement application that is sent to someone, there will be a letter on how to complete it.
That's a good idea.
Everyone, not just veterans, everyone. And I would like to read something on behalf of the assessors' board.
Yep.
Unfortunately, the assessors' office was neglected for some time. Many types of applications were accepted and processed with numerous errors. There had not even been inspection performed for over a year. Betty Jo was hired and proceeded to clean up the office. As she came across errors, she proceeded to correct them. Dozens of abatement applications were incorrectly completed. She worked with each resident to correct the applications, sometimes spending multiple hours with each resident, helping them get the information needed to correctly submit their abatement applications. Residents were extremely thankful to her for her patience and assistance in getting the applications submitted correctly. She was even given flowers and treated to lunch by some residents as a thank you for her help. Some of those people were my homies, I want to call them. She's worked very hard in the last year to correct many errors. We have never witnessed her being anything but respectful to any resident that came into the office, nor do we believe she was disrespectful to any. We have never witnessed her being anything but respectful to any resident that came into the office, nor do we believe she was disrespectful to anyone. The assessor's board finds no basis for this heinous accusation, and we support Betty Jo one hundred and fifty percent.
Okay. Did anybody else have anything on the board?
We'll see what the next question.
All right, again, it doesn't need to be. Trying to handle this.
We we did say that this is all pretty, let's say, like, Joe, they're gonna get sick. Unfortunately, things do happen, well, for we can try to do this. She she wasn't comfortable with that at all, she wanted no changes whatsoever. We all tried to make changes, and you guys did, like you said, what can we do, what can we do, we tried to be proactive. She didn't want to change a bit, you guys remember this too, we've tried to make all kinds of concessions, do what we could, do what we could. We said we sent her a letter with a new application, she thought that was an insult. Like, I totally get it, because everything started off on a wrong foot, but we've tried to do different things, like you said, Jeff, and like we said. We've tried to do multiple different things, we can't make everybody happy once again. Unfortunately, we don't want her to feel any negative issues toward the town, even like I said. If it happened to me, I'd be the first one to bring it, and you'd do it a lot louder than I am now, probably, Dave. And and notice, but I think if you're excited to move it back away, like Betty Jo did, and we, other ones. I would understand that, and now it's just getting to the point where everybody's nitpicking and nitpicking and going further, going to where it does need to be.
So, thank you for that, by the way. A- a- as you know, the Board of Selectmen doesn't want to be in this position. We don't want this, we don't want residents to complain to us, but that's part of our job. We hope, we want everybody to be happy, we want everybody to be able to work together and life to be so much simpler. But unfortunately, it happens, and we have to take every single thing you know, serious, because, again, it's serious allegations. Okay, so we have to treat it with that respect, just like we would do for any of you or anybody else in this town. They had the same or similar situations or or you know, felt that they were being marginalized by a department, okay? Because of their part of a protected class. Okay, and and that's why we have to take it very serious, and we do. Okay, so we're doing our due diligence to investigate that, okay? And, you know, there's been a lot of things being said, and I understand you're passionate. Okay, and I love that about you, because we want passionate people in town. We want passionate people in our departments that care about their departments and want to do it. And when you stepped up to be a part of the assessors, that showed you cared and you want to step up and do that. Okay, as every department does, okay? It is a thankless job to be on a lot of these departments and boards and everybody knows that, everybody. E- e- everybody deals with certain people that can may differ opinions with you, okay? And there's ways we can resolve that. And, you know, I'll I'll throw out some suggestions here in a minute. But there was some stuff said to Mr. Farrar, and I don't know if you want to comment about anything before.
Sure.
Okay.
This was all the last time, the plane came down, screamed out, Jim, I was gonna break out of there. So Farrar came down, that's what was going on and all this stuff, therefore, there is no mouse. I'm told that they're clean, just got a brand new car, this, this and that. Betty Jo went above and beyond and said if it was in certain danger, certain situations, they could get the exercise tax taken care of and stuff like that. So there's no mouse, Jim didn't say anything, Jim didn't ask anything, Betty Jo reached out and just in conversation with Jim and Betty Jo, I was talking, I was there. Jim had mentioned it, so she went out of her way to say, well, let them know, next time you see them, let them know, just so it wasn't Betty Jo saying to her or anything like that. Because Jim and you talked a lot about it, let her know that they are, if so, they would be eligible for that. So there's no mouse, she was above and beyond, out of her way, after we just got screaming, you know that by then. And yet she still comes, wait, the same and stuff like that, did Jim tell you that?
So.
In all due respect, I mean.
Okay, we'll let him answer that, because I don't speak for Mr. Farrar. He can speak for himself and we'll give him an opportunity, just like we give anybody else. I know from what I've witnessed dealing with the applicant, she has been nothing but courteous, kind and professional. And very soft spoken, that is my view and what I've seen. She does her homework and she presents it well. That was my view of whatever. Again, different people have different experiences with people. And, again, you may have had a different experience with her, but all I know is what I've seen. I can't judge her on something somebody else is saying, because it wouldn't be fair, because I've never seen that. That's what you've witnessed.
But you're judging Betty Jo for this.
I'm not judging Betty Jo for anything.
But that's what we're here for.
But we're looking into an accusation as we would for any other person, and it's a serious accusation.
It is.
So. We don't want anybody to feel bad, and we don't want any residents, we don't want anybody, any applicants, veterans, minorities. Whoever, we're all equal here in this world, and we're treating everybody equal, okay? It wasn't, you know, Mrs. O'Brien bringing the complaint, it was a complaint against her. So unfortunately, she's on the wrong side of this one this time. And we have to investigate that. It's not a good experience for anybody to go through something like this, I understand that. And we're trying to be as respectful to you and to everybody else as we can. And again, we treat, and I know from the years we've been dealing with each other, I've always been fair. I've never, like been unfair to people, I've always listened to both sides and tried to make the best decision that I can, within my ability. Whether you agree with that sometimes or somebody else doesn't agree, what's a bad deal for you might be a good deal for somebody else.
All have our feelings, we all have.
Right, it might be a, you know, but I try to do what's the right.
Well, like you just said, we all can agree to disagree, you feel one way, I feel another way, but we can get past it, this is what it said, we should get past it. It's been six months, we should already been past this, guys.
It just got brought up again to us, we thought we were past this.
I I assumed and everybody else assumed it was already past us. There's been going on and on, multiple meetings, stuff like that, the abatement's been granted, stuff like that, so.
Well, you know what assumed is an acronym for, right? So I won't say that in this room, but we don't assume anything, we just, what we have is evidence and we weigh the evidence and we look at that, okay? So you asked about Mr. Farrar on something, Mr. Farrar, do you have?
I I would just say, you know, it is a difficult situation for both sides, okay? It it's a difficult situation, um, you know, I I've come down there, I haven't witnessed Mrs. Hardy being the irate person, um, that that has has been stated today. Um, you know, I just, I haven't witnessed that. You know, and I understand that, you know, in my role here, um, is to provide the support and the training for all our town employees. And that's why that I petitioned to the Board of Selectmen and with their approval, we're going to have a a training the end of this month geared toward everybody, uh, that handles the public, which is a lot of departments here. Um, that will provide customer service training for everybody. So that we can make sure that we know de-escalation, that we can understand how people may feel on how you answer a question or respond to somebody, um, because we have to be cognizant of that. Um, like the chair had indicated, we're held to a higher standard, we're all public servants here. Uh, we're answer- answerable to the taxpayers. So I think my role here is to see if we can get this training, get it up and running, make sure it gets done. Offer it to to our employees as a support. Um, and and that's one of the things that I that I've done, and one of the things that I continue to do is to provide opportunities for our staff to advance themselves in training and to to handle customer service issues and so on and so forth. But what is, what is uniquely, you know, unique about this, and this has spanned since August twenty ninth of last year, is that it's continued on. It wasn't a a situation where it was a one and done, and it was dropped and 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 nothing has you know, nothing had else had transpired. It it was just continuing, whether it be letters sent, um, letters that are incorrectly sent. Letters that were saying that, would contact the town administrator for, um, you know, for questions about an abatement. I have no experience, I'm not qualified to do that. Um, but you know, these are things that have prolonged the inevitable fear and has, you know, agitated the complainant. And so I think it's good that we get this out there, I think it's good that we have some training, uh, and we start moving in the positive direction. I like what Karen had indicated about, you know, a a form where it has some specific instructions as to what is, you know, what is required and how to move forward. Um, and that people are treated fairly equitably.
So, with that, okay. There's, there's obviously some things we need to do better here, okay? The training is something that we're we're all going to, I'm going to be there, I'm going to be doing the training, I need it too. I've taken it before, I've done it several times, and I always learn something new, okay? And it helps us, because sometimes without knowing it, we can be the agitator of this situation and make it worse by either body language, or we may be raising our voice because we're passionate about something, or just not explaining something right, because the applicant might not be understanding what you're trying to say. Um, sometimes there's barriers that we got to look at and say, okay, why is this person not understanding this, and how can I help them to understand it better? So there's things we need to do better in situations. Uh, you are correct, um, when you say the Board of Selectmen has no authority over you or the Assessor's Office. We don't, okay? That, we don't have authority over a lot of boards, they're independent boards. You're elected by the town, by the residents of the town, and put in that position. So we have no real authority as far as that. What we do have authority is when we're being told we're probably going to be sued. And it's going to cost the town money, and the selectmen have to stand forward for that. And we don't understand why we're being sued. You know, in a situation where the applicant, one way or another, they're entitled to it. It was a thousand dollars, okay? So a thousand dollar abatement could cost the town, I don't know. Tim, how much is a a lawsuit like that typically, well? No, I'm just, I'm just saying. I I I'm just saying, I'm trying to.
It's it's our meeting, so like, I don't know, ten fifteen thousand, yeah.
So we'd have to pay out ten fifteen thousand just to have you guys represent us.
Yeah, best case.
And if we lost.
Yeah.
And if we lost.
Yeah, there's.
Hundreds of thousands.
Yeah, we're we're in public session, so I'm not.
So we can lose a lot of money, okay? So, a- again, when when we.
We get, we get money for doing things wrong, we're saying we're being.
So it's, it's my turn now. We've given, given you guys ample opportunity to speak and say things, and now I'm explaining where we're looking at this from, okay? For a thousand dollar abatement, which is going to be approved anyways, because the person's entitled, okay? Because there's no debating, the husband is a veteran, okay? So that husband's entitled to the abatement.
Husband is, yes.
So, again, there's no debate in that, it's been done previous years, so there's no debate about that.
Incorrectly, that's what you're not understanding, if you did something wrong, and the state came to you and said you were in compliance, you were not doing things correctly. You would want to be in compliance, correct, or correctly of them wrong.
I absolutely would.
Against the state, or would you go with what the state laws says?
I would absolutely.
State laws says to protect the town of war, because if not, they can reach in and take the abatement back, or they could take all the abatements back. Whatever you would like to do, we can do.
So so you asked me a question, okay? I would go in the recommendations of the council and what the state guidance is.
And that's what we did.
Okay, um, so that's the way we would go, and that's the way we go. We don't have to agree with it or not, like it or dislike it, we have to do what's provided to us by law. And when we don't understand the law, we get an opinion from counsel, and they say, hey, this is where this goes. This, this is what you should be doing on this to prevent getting sued, or, you know, having the state come at you and, you know, do whatever. So we, we do the best thing, it's the best thing for the town, okay? And what's legal for the town. So, when we look at this, all right, to get back on topic. We weigh all these things in there, okay, and and the factors that leads up to this, okay? And we have to understand, okay, why is that person feeling marginalized? What is, what is happening? Okay, and then, okay, you can't tell somebody else how they feel or how they should feel, nor can I. Okay, and I wouldn't tell you how you should feel, or, you know, nobody else should either, because that's your feelings. You're the, you're you're an individual person that has a set of feelings and beliefs that's different from others. Okay, that's what makes us all unique. But you got to be able to understand that other people have that too. And help them. So my suggestion would be, absolutely, put it in writing, establish a policy, okay? If that's what you guys are expecting from somebody from a veteran's abatement application, put it in writing. Who is going to fill it out? Okay, yeah, you know, and and put it all in writing. So when that veteran or veteran spouse comes there and looks at it and says, oh, okay, this is what I have to do. Because this is what they've established, this is what I got to go by. If they disagree with that, and you're, as long as you're treating everybody the exact same way. Okay, and that's important, because you're going to treat everybody the exact same way. And if you have that in writing and you go by that, and Betty Jo, that helps you too, because then you're going to sit there and say it says right here in writing, that's put out, it's put out on the town website, if you're going to fill out this application, this is what we need. And this is what the, the, the Board of Assessors says we have to do. You're an employee of the Board of Assessors, okay? They make the, you know, they give you your guidance, your marching orders, all right? So it's in their best interest to give you the best and most direct marching orders. So put it in writing, post it, put it everywhere, so everybody understands that. Okay, why are you doing it? I would definitely make sure you run it past legal. Um, if you're going to do something like that, just to say, okay, yeah, everything you're doing here is legal, it's within your ability, you're good. Because again, if somebody disagrees with it, they're the ones that's going to have to defend the town on it. Because you're either marginalizing or something or whatever, or it conflicts with the law. They're the ones accepting that and saying, yep, you're good, okay? Um, that would be in your best interest, I can't tell you, you have to do that. I can recommend you doing that, and it would probably be helpful in the future, because it would, it would. Again, going forward, just make sure that's clearly posted, and it would help people. Because when they sit there and say, where are you getting that from? Board of, Board of Assessors put out this policy saying this is where their guidance is, and that's how I have to abide by it. If you have any questions, you can file an appeal with the Board of Assessors, and you can go to FPC. And if you don't agree with their response, then you can take it to the next level, within your, you know, chain of command, what was it? DSO? The appellate tax board, so they could take it at that. The reason why this, this didn't go that way is because the allegation that the person was being treated differently. And she just so happens to be a minority, okay? That brings it at a higher level, and not just being a minority, but a protected class. If the person that was the applicant was had a different sexual preference, minority, age discrimination. Had a different sexual preference, um, minority, age discrimination. Y- y- you, you got a bunch of categories that are protected and. That kinda, okay, well, what is the difference, alright, between? This, this issue and anybody else. And that seems to be, um, the biggest concern. So. Without getting too much off topic, um, again, I think a lot of this could be resolved by establishing clear. Policies on, on what's to be done and it helps protect you, Betty Jo. Because you have, you know exactly, you, you're not citing, well, it's, it's the law or somebody over at DLS directed us to do this. It's right there in writing, approved by the board of assessors and those are your marching orders. So, and I would suggest the board of assessors vote on that type of thing to make it official. And, you know, make sure that, because you have, anytime you make changes like that, you gotta vote on them. You have to post it clearly, make sure you meet all open meeting laws, um, you know, y- you know the standard. You guys have hit the glass. But those are little things that people. Will go after a, a board or a department for, they fail to meet those standards. And believe me, we get attacked for stuff all the time. We, you guys, you guys say that how you're attacked about stuff. We get our share of complaints, but we address them. And, okay, you want, you want meeting minutes? Here you go. Do a Freedom of Information Act request. Here you go. No problem. We, we give, we give stuff all the time. And handle that stuff, okay?
Yes, sir. I, I also will recommend, you know, meetings being recorded. It's, it's a good practice. It, it helped us a lot many times instead of just having a paper because it. It does help and we're doing all the right thing. We're doing the good thing. You can go back to the recording and find out exactly what happened in here.
So that would be another recommendation too. Don't hold meetings in the assessor's office. Hold them in here where it can be recorded and, you know, everybody has opportunity. We are completely transparent with everything. That's why we always let WCAT six know that we're having meetings. You know, we, we tell a lot, you know, we put them on, um, the local access network. We stream them via Facebook. And we also do Zoom meetings to give everybody the accessibility to see. Because when people say you're hiding something. Hiding what? You know, everything's out there. You can see it. All the meetings are recorded. Everything's publicized. And it helps us too because when it comes down to it and they say, somebody says, you never did that, you never voted on that. And we have recorded meetings of it, minutes of it, and, you know, Miss, Mr. Zeissin looks at it and goes. They actually absolutely did cover themselves with, with that because it's recorded and we could see this and it's public information. So it squashes a lot of this stuff because sometimes people. Take thing, I think, take things out of context sometimes. So you really gotta do the extra. To protect yourselves and the town, okay? Because we're all employees of the town and. E- everything we do is held to a higher standard, okay? Any comments I make? People say, that's the town because I said something. Same thing with Mr. Ihaker, Mr. Belize, Mr. Ferraro. How many times have you guys had? People express concerns? A lot. Um, but we gotta handle them with that respect, okay? Whether they're frivolous or not, we give everybody the opportunity and represent it, okay? Do you have anything?
I just, I agree with having the policy. Tell people how to fill this out. Make sure it's got enough detail so they understand. Vote on those policies. Incite the law that backs up what you're requiring them to do. Cause clearly right now, you know, there's a problem here. So figure out how to make it clear and how to back it up. And then there won't be a problem in the future.
Also a state or?
I, I, I don't care about that. Filling this out, I know nothing about anything. Tell me how to do it. And back it up with something that says, you know, we got this from or, you know, we're referencing. National law section, whatever, 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 right? So if the person has a question like, nah, this doesn't seem right, they know where to go and then they can look it up too. Uh, the complaint is extremely intelligent and she knows how to look stuff up. Okay, so that's why you give the people who are intelligent where to go if they question it. Follow the law, which I assume you are, then that person's gonna say, oh, okay, I got it. They said to do it here. It says it here. I'm good. And then everything goes away.
Was kinda insulting my death, which I'm pretty sure everybody's been here a long time. We would just like to know if we can have access to counsel if we do change the rights on him so he can go over it or review it. So we're not putting out anything wrong, declaratory or anything in that nature. So we know we're putting out the right, correct information.
So we don't deny people access to counsel. We ask that you present it to Mr. Ferrara so he can. Guide that because our legal expenses are through the roof. And the, these things, Mr. Zeissin sitting here cost us a lot of money for today. Um, and he's earned it. It's not saying that he doesn't deserve that money. He's gone to law school. He's done that. Everybody has. But it does cost the town money to do that. But we have to do that to make sure we're not doing anything wrong. And that you're not doing anything wrong. So it, it, it gets expensive and. Just present it to Mr. Farrar and he'll give you what you need and you're not gonna. That's just so he understands, that's so he understands where the legal costs are gonna be. Cause we keep, the problem is if we have every department contacting. The attorneys themselves.
Overview it, look at it, saying, yes, we're fine.
I have no problem with that, do you?
No, I would just.
I don't have any problem with that. And, and, you know, it's just like the planning board. When the planning board is, is trying to do something. With the bylaws or something, trying to bring something up. We make a document and we revise it. We make it sure it's neat. And then we say. Uh, town administrator, can we have this sent to town, uh, to? For an approval. And it comes back with some changes. We change it and we're good.
And he might catch simple things on there and say, hey, you might wanna revise this because you spelt Warren wrong, okay? Um, or you did this. You fix those things. So when legal's looking at it, they're not spell checking and getting paid. An extra half an hour to spell check your document, okay? Um, so he kind of vets the stuff to do that. But we have no problem with you having access to legal. That's fine. Yeah, that's, that's what they're there for. Um, but just let Mr. Farrar know so he can track those costs. Cause. This costs us all. We all pay taxes in this town. And every time, every time something goes in front of Tim and KP Law or. You know, the other attorneys. That. Ching, 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 starts happening and it costs a lot of money. Um, so we're good with that. But do you have anything else?
No, we all, we all have a big job. We're done.
Okay.
Finishing this up or we're gonna dismiss this or how are we doing?
Well, we'll, we'll get to that. So now with the public, anybody that's not an assessor or anything, does anybody have a comment, sir?
Michael Gray.
How you doing, sir?
Uh, good. You're saying how much money you spend on your lawyer and your lawyer just said in his opinion, he's had nothing to do with this. What are you basing your decision on then? Of what decision you make was Betty Jo? Cause it seems to me you're gonna, you know, if you, if the town could lose too much, eh, you'll sacrifice her, you know, just save this money.
No, if, if a department is right, we'll stand by him. We absolutely will. We haven't made it. We haven't made a decision yet, sir. I, I understand. And, and I, again, thank you for doing that, but we haven't made a decision yet. We haven't even talked about where we're gonna go with this yet. You know, we're hearing other people's input. Do you have anything else, sir? Alright, thank you. Anybody else have anything?
My wife already said it all.
She's a good advocate.
Yes, she is.
Thank you. Again, thank you both for your service with the town. Any of the veterans uh, here. Betty Jo, thank you very much for your service too. I respect all veterans. Thank you, sir. Um, and, and we all do. Again, none of us wanna be here today, but we have to treat every situation. Equally, okay? Um, so if anybody has nothing further, Mr. Farrar, do you have anything further? No? Mr. Zeissin? No? Okay. Do you have anything, sir?
No.
Okay, do you have anything, sir?
I'll make emphasis on recording your, again, your, your meetings. Even if he, he can't come over here. Put a voice recorder in your, in your phone and have it really help us.
That I would highly recommend doing a meetings in here.
We can teach you how to use the O and everything.
And, and it will help you any way you can to, to properly do it. And you should record the meetings to protect you guys and to protect the town. Because sometimes things can be taken out of context or a motion can be added to situations that, um. Cause more of an issue. And when something's recorded, it's black and white. It's right there. So, and it usually ends any situations, as Mr. Belize is saying. And we've had a few situations where. Having it recorded has.
Cause they can go through the video and check out the minutes, so it's much better.
So you have nothing further?
No.
Alright, so with this. I, I, I would say that I have not. Witnessed any issue, um, of racism. From Mrs. Betty Jo O'Brien. I, I haven't seen that where it raises to that level. There's probably guidance being given that's maybe being. Not clearly passed on. To certain members of the public, which the assessors are gonna fix. It sounds like they're looking at fixing that issue. And, um. You know, I, I think we've gone as far as we can with this because we haven't had any clear. Evidence of, um, this was done because. This person's a minority or this was done because this person's part of a protected class. I'm not seeing that. It just. Needs to be clearly defined on what's gonna be, the process is gonna be. And that everybody is held to that same exact process. You know, again, that's for the assessors to determine on that. Or else we're gonna be right here again, doing this all over again. And not, if not for the same person, for somebody else maybe. So it's. Everybody's best interest and the town's best, best interest is to clearly. Put these things in writing where people can see it before they come and do this. So I'm sure you guys don't wanna be here either.
So. Nobody wants to be here. We don't wanna fight with the public. We don't wanna fight with anybody. Anything, what's good, we're here to help them. That's what we're there for. They've been exceptions and stuff like that. We're there to help. And if anybody did, this apparently got off track somehow. And it went the wrong way and kept on going, it should've never gone this way. That's why I was saying, why are we here six months later? This should've been taken care of at the very beginning. I don't think anybody would've gotten it, but, but by what happened, just kept escalating, escalating and escalating. We should've probably, as all of us, squashed this in the very beginning. But it hasn't at any point. And unfortunately. This person has gotten upset more and more because she feels a certain way when she comes in. And of course, we feel the same way too and so.
But now it'll get fixed going forward.
Going forward if we can all.
That's the important thing. And we're all in this, understanding that we're gonna correct things that haven't been working. And we get, we, we cannot tell you to do that, but it would be in the assessor's best interest. To correct things to make it clearer for the public because then we don't be down this route again.
It's like we've been trying to the best we possibly can. We can, we've been out there doing everything.
So, this situation, I really haven't seen that level. And, and to be clearly, and I hate to put you on the spot with this. Did you do anything that with racial intent because she was a minority?
No, I did not.
Thank you. Alright, um, do you have any?
I would share thoughts. I just think that, yeah, this issue has kind of boiled and gotten. Bigger and bigger. And I think the best way to, to fix it is to make corrections and. Move forward. Cause I don't think we're gonna solve, we haven't really solved anything of the past, but we've come up with ideas. To make the future work. I think that's where we're gonna have to go with this.
Much as. Just like I said, a six to me, it's a nine to you. Unfortunately, a bad situation. It caused bad feelings, make someone feel uncomfortable. Moving forward, you know. Keeping that in mind that, you know, everybody's sensible and. It could get, you know, it could escalate quickly. You know, work it out and, you know, like we all said, moving forward, we, we, we have to provide a very good customer service and. You know, to prevent all that.
So. Since we're here. Because, um. Only we heard this. Now I'm gonna reach over to you, Tim.
What do you wanna, what are you trying to say?
So to close this out. The board doesn't find, or at least I don't find. That the actions of the assessors was guided by racial intent. Cause we don't have any evidence of that. We see no evidence of that unless, have you?
It's your call, but no, yeah.
Okay.
So I would say, I would, I would just recommend making a motion to that effect saying, uh. Yeah, what's that?
That, how would that be phrasing? Cause that's what I'm trying to think of is the wording.
Say no finding. There's no finding.
I find, well, so are you trying to say that there's insufficient evidence to conclude that? Ms. O'Brien, uh, discriminated against the complainant on the basis of her race as alleged?
Yes.
But there's no, uh, we find there's no evidence that there's, that Ms. O'Brien. Uh, or to support the allegations made by the complainant?
You're getting too legal easy on me here. I'm trying to, I'm trying to say.
Say, say.
I know, but we all, we all agree is that she didn't make any claims or anything of that nature, so.
So, no, we're, we're trying to.
I, I realize.
We're trying to vote on it, but how we word the vote is important.
I think the first one was, was kind of.
Yeah, well, like, it, it depends on, you can answer yes and no. Well, how do we?
I, I'd move for a, uh, I, I, I'd move to issue a finding that there is insufficient evidence to conclude. That Ms. O'Brien discriminated against the complainant on the basis of her race.
Well, well, bingo.
Say so moves and then take a vote.
So moved. All in favor?
For Chiakker, aye.
Betty, Betty's, aye.
David Dufran, aye. The motion passes unanimously. There was no finding of racial intent within your, um. Procedures, but we all know we gotta move forward and better our services here. We make mistakes every day. Everybody does. And we just need to better our processes to make them more clear for people to go through. Um, so. Um, with that said, um, does anybody have anything to add before we close our meeting?
I do. I am concerned about future content and how we should proceed forward. So. Um, I don't wanna put either of us in a position where we can misconstrue anything. So how, uh, what is?
So where you getting? I understand you want somebody around you.
I'm saying, I'm asking for a recommendation of how.
So what I would recommend is you treat that person fairly and equally like you treat every other resident. Okay, and because the minute you treat them differently. Okay, whether it's to protect something you're saying, you're treating them differently now.
Okay, now that I stated.
So it gets into a problem because then that person says, that person says, hey, why is it every time I come to the office, I got three people standing there over me now? Because why is that person the one getting that now? Again, you wouldn't want that in your situation if you were, you're doing that and I understand where you're going here, but I want, I want you, I want you to understand. The purpose of this is everybody's treated equally.
And they are.
And, and that's where we're going to go, we're going to keep it that equally.
They are, but in treating that equally, we're getting resistance. And so I don't want to have to be back here again in this situation. So what steps can be taken to mitigate this type of situation going forward? I am treating people equally.
Let me help you with this one, this is very simple. Okay. The applicant's not applying till next year. Correct?
I'm just talking, they can come in for any reason.
But again, you're treating, treat, treat that person just like you treat everybody else. Okay. The applicant's not coming in for the abatement form till next year. Okay. You're, you're, at that point, okay, you'll have clear procedures. You'll, 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 you'll have clear procedures defining what you're gonna, what you're gonna do and how to fill out things. So you just as everybody, everybody gets that, when you mail out these, these abatement applications or whatever your process is. I would include to complete this form, do this. And this, this is to notify all residents that qualify or are, or applying for this. And the attorneys will give you guidance, maybe you want to put a little disclaimer in there saying that.
What I'm saying is we offer a variety of services from abatement applications all the way through, I want a copy of my property card. So any moment, phone call, a walk into the office, anything can happen.
Right. And treat that person fairly and equally like you would treat any other resident. Because you don't want to treat them differently.
And I do, and I'm saying that this is a contentious situation, so what am I? What is going to happen when this person comes into the office?
Look, it's very easy. Just think, how would you like to be treated? Treat everyone.
I'm sorry, that's not again, because you want to see one side of this person. We are seeing a.
He's in there.
She is a nasty person.
Again, enough, we're not going to be calling people names.
Just telling you the side.
Okay, again.
Right, you guys said you see one thing, and you know, as I do, I'm going to act differently in front of you than I am in front of somebody else. You're more sugar than we're.
But we, we, again, the point is we all treat each other equally. And with respect.
And this is what's happening.
So when we, we get, we got customer service training coming up next week.
The twenty seven.
This, this is something to bring up with them in that training. Because they'll give you the tools to be able to address these situations. We don't always have to agree with somebody. Okay, but we treat them with respect.
We're not asking it, we're asking what happens if she comes in and harasses Betty Jo or anything in that nature.
Who have your phone and start recording?
Yes, yeah, okay. And.
You can't do that. You can't as a town. No, you can't, not as a town employee. Uh, Tim, do you want to correct that?
Yeah, that was, that's not a good idea, don't do that, uh, you can't do that.
If you say I'm going to record this, you can't do that?
Uh, please don't do that, it, it's, it's not a good idea.
Okay, then not a good idea, well, we can't do it.
You can't do it.
How was she protected from allegation?
I think we need, we need it.
So. So again, there's a code of conduct for people visiting the building. If there's a concern or somebody is getting loud and swearing at you or being combative, okay, then you can notify Mr. Ferrara. And he will come down and and try to resolve the situation, and if he can't resolve it, then the police will be called to remove the person.
And if I'm not available, then feel free, if you feel as though that you're, you're being harassed and that you're, you're, uh, you know, you're, you're in some type of danger, then call the police.
But again, I would highly recommend, just because somebody is passionate, we see passion. Okay, people get passionate about stuff, okay? Bruce has been passionate several times in here, but I haven't yelled at him and told him he had to leave. We deal with it. And we listen to, to each other. So sometimes people get passionate with things, especially when they feel they're right. Okay. And, but, but we got to deal with it, you know? It, it, it might not be the best situation, but we got to deal with people like that sometimes.
You understand, they're talking about us being lied or wrong, we just want it filled out properly. And what, once again, you guys want to block in the.
Again, that's, that's between you and the other assessors now.
You guys have yourself involved in it, so.
Well, no, we didn't get ourselves involved in it. We get brought into it. But that, that's what you guys do in the assessor's office is your job, not ours, okay? The people elected you to do that. And we've always stood by that. Where it gets out of the lane is where something, an allegation happened that's outside of that purview. And then it falls under the Board of Selectment to investigate that. Okay, and fall through. Um, I think we've done that today. Okay, and we've been fair to all parties, we've listened to it. We've heard your arguments, we've made a decision. Okay, um, there's not going to be any disciplinary reaction. Um, but we do give strong can, is strong opinion that things should be clearly defined within your office to prevent this from happening again. Because it could be somebody else. Uh, it might, might, might not be the same applicant, what if it is somebody else? And it comes up again. Okay, then you're in the same situation. Avoid that. Well, again, and Ms. O'Brien, you understand. Clearly define it, so it doesn't prevent.
I, I'm still not understanding that this is a still highly contentious situation. And what is, what is going to be done or can be done to stop a future situation from happening?
So that person absolutely has right and access to the building.
Yep.
Okay, um, there's no restraining order on the person.
Yep.
Okay, which would stop somebody from coming in the building. It is a public building. Um, the public has a right to access that. Not all of the public are going to agree with you. Okay. Not all the public agrees with us. How many times you have people walking into the Board of Selectment office to tell you that you don't know your job? Or one of us is completely incompetent?
I deal with that every day, but I don't have people making complaints like this, so what I'm saying.
But it's part of it.
Particular person.
We do.
If they come into the office, I don't want to have to be sitting here again.
And, and you know what I do? When that person that filed that complaint against me and does that, I invite them in the office and sit down and talk with them. Okay, I shake their hand, nice to talk with you. What, what's the misunderstanding? Let's try to resolve something here. I, I don't try to push them away, the more somebody pushes somebody away and try, I'm just saying figuratively. The more you try to keep them away. No, I'm just saying.
But you're saying we pushed them away, we did not, that's the thing.
I said figuratively. The more, the more you try to keep them away from your office. The more they want to be there.
I'm just trying to diffuse a future situation, but we can.
I, 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 I would say the best thing for you to do is treat that person with respect. Again, continue to do so, treat the person with respect and treat them like you would treat anybody else.
Like what you do.
Okay, is that? Yeah, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I think sometimes you just have to deal with contentious people, I mean, that's part of the customer service.
I get that, I get that, but I don't want to be here again, that's what, that's, this is a different situation.
And we keep going back and around and around and around. We keep going around, we've been here.
Right, we're, we're here because of ambiguities on the form and the contention between whose interpretation.
And I, and I.
So we're going to get rid of that in, in the future, or for the future, I guess.
Yep.
Clear policies protect you.
Yep.
Yeah, so, did you have anything to add to that? Anything that they could probably do?
Nope.
Mr. Farrar?
No.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so let's, do a motion to close.
No, we got two, two minutes.
Oh, now we have to enter into executive session, okay, now we got to put the sign up. Travis, so you're aware, um, we need you to stop recording because we're going to go into executive session now.